Okay, let's start with a roll call of trustees. Clerk Sarah.
Mayor Colapi.
Here.
Trustee Herzog.
Here.
Trustee Contino.
Here.
Trustee Arbogast.
Here.
Okay, thank you. Let's just go through the agenda. I'll scroll down here to see if I have a idea what we're going to do this meeting. So first off, I'm going to give a budget overview. I've got three charts I put together that basically are both both sized versions of the information I put in the newsletter from last week. We'll go through those page by page. After each page, I'll stop and ask if there's any questions or comments. And we'll complete those three charts. And then I want to explain to you what we're doing with the sewer special benefit assessment, the SBA. We're going to increase it from forty thousand a year to fifty thousand. I'll explain to you why and what that means. And then we're going to go into a public hearing with the local law to override the tax cap, which we need to do in order to justify past the budget that we want to do. So I will have a public hearing open by motion. Make room for public comment for anyone in attendance. Then we'll close the public hearing. Then we'll go straight into a public hearing for the budget. So again, I'll open a public hearing by motion. Make time for our public commenter questions. And then close the public hearing. And then I'll go to a vote by the board to adopt a resolution, which is the local law to increase, to go above the tax cap with this budget. And I'll do a motion and roll call vote to pass adopt the resolution. Then we'll do a vote by motion and roll call for the SBA increase. And then finally, we'll do a vote to adopt the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two budget. And after that, don't let me leave the meeting or adjourn the meeting until we have a discussion about a request I got for a permit to hold a Memorial Day parade, which isn't until May thirty first. But I want to have initial discussion now. We'll follow up with additional discussion at the next board meeting, which is going to be on the twenty first of April, which will be a regular monthly meeting. Any questions about the agenda? Okay. So now I'm going to take you through three charts that give you an overview of the reasons why and what's in this new budget that we are looking to pass tonight. So as background, there were a couple of issues that we had walking into this budget that we knew we had to address. The first is that the the general fund, the A fund, finished the fiscal year twenty nineteen, twenty twenty, hundred thousand dollars in the red, which means that our expenses finished a hundred thousand dollars in excess of our revenues. And to close that gap, we had to pull money from the unrestricted fund balance that we have. And by doing that, our unrestricted fund balance dropped below a hundred thousand, actually dropped about seventy thousand dollars. And because of that, the New York State Controller's Office reduced our fiscal stress rating from no designation, which is like a neutral statement, to one of susceptible fiscal stress. In order to fix that, we need to increase the fund balance. That's one of the actions we're taking forward. The second issue we had was that our current budget, the one fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, did not have sufficient funds in it to cover the base salaries, particularly of the police and the highway. Or did it have any accommodation for estimated overtime and shift coverage for things like the fact that we got fifty four inches of snow? And there was no accommodation for the highway workers to be plowing in the middle of the night, which we want them to do? Or for some of the extraneous work that the police need to do, especially when they're called in for special emergency shifts? The third, the fourth issue we had was that the water fund had an IOU to the general fund of fifty thousand dollars. Basically, in years past, we found a need to send send money from the general fund to the water fund for them to balance their books. And you can do that as long as you pay it back within two years. Well, our two years is up. And so we now have to make accommodations to pay the general fund back the money that the water fund borrowed. The same thing was true with the sewer fund. We had to pay from the general fund to the sewer fund sixty thousand dollars in the past two years in order for them to balance their books there. So those are issues we knew coming into this budget. While going through the budget for twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two, we had some additional issues we needed to address. The first is that we bought last year a new police vehicle as we do on schedule every ten year, every five years. I guess we we have two vehicles. We replace one every five years. So a vehicle's on the road for ten years before we replace. And so that ten, ten years for the old vehicle was up last year. We also bought a new dump truck. And the cost of those two new vehicles adds thirty thirty three thousand dollars principal and interest to our annual budget for the next three, four years. What was new news to me is that we still have two more years to pay on the twenty nineteen dump truck we bought a few years ago. I was told that last year was the last payment for that. Bad information. I didn't check it out. My fault. So we now have to continue paying off the twenty nineteen dump truck while adding in these two new vehicles. The second issue is that we had to go back and figure out what is the estimated overtime and shift coverage requirements for all three of the key full time often of areas in our general fund? That being the police, the highway, and the front office. And also, what are the additional combinations we need to make to to ensure we have sufficient shift coverage for the coverage of the police shifts throughout the week? And those two things, when done correctly, adds forty two thousand dollars to our personal services lines. The third issue was that we had to commit to a police reform action plan, which includes additional work by the police, additional training for the police, and some additional expenses we have not determined yet. So actually, the cost there is a to be determined. We did put some buffer in anticipating what that cost might be. Fourth, we had a new news item that the firehouse roof needed to be replaced. And the fire company came to us with a proposal. They wanted to go to a steel roof, which would be a lifetime guarantee, with a total cost of a hundred and ten thousand dollars. And they would pay half of it. And we reviewed this with the town. And they are in full full agreement of that. Now, since the town pays eighty four point four percent of the fire and rescue budget, they had a large say in how this should be determined. And so based on the firehouse's recommendation, the review we did of the the benefits versus the asphalt, we agreed to go and support the fire company's roof replacement strategy. They have agreed to pay the whole hundred and ten thousand dollars upfront. And we, between the village and the town, will pay our fifty percent of the hundred and ten thousand over three to four years. So that was a new news item. We didn't hear about it until we had the first review of the budget a month ago. And finally, with the transfer of the Thorn Building to the LLC, which is imminent, hopefully by June first, we will no longer be receiving the trust payments that are associated with the Thorn Building that help to cover the expenses of maintaining the grounds as well as the building, which is about twenty five thousand dollars per year. So because of these issues, both the background issues and the new issues, the action plan will put in place for the following. We've identified with Karen's help how we can actually repay the money from the water and sewer funds to the general fund by July of this year. And we're going to take those funds and add them to the general fund balance to get us out of this purgatory with the New York State Controller's Office. On top of that, we start reserves for both water and sewer to anticipate future capital improvements. And as you all know, one of the key things we're going to focus on after we've cleared out of the budget process is to go figure out what we need to do to improve the infrastructure in the sewer. Because that's an aging facility and it needs help. The third action we did was we froze all payments to the reserve accounts. The ambulance, the highway vehicle, the police vehicle, the village hall. Actually, all of our reserve accounts except for the contracted required sixty thousand dollars a year to the fire fire department's apparatus. That's sixty thousand dollars by contract. We have to pay that. So that's not changed. And the fourth action we did was we booked zero dollars contingency. And basically, if there's issues, new news that comes up, we're going to work to figure out where within the budget area that the issue will arise. We're going to go find other money as opposed to pulling a contingency fund. Any questions about that bridge from the last year to this year? Seal or Judith? Everybody's okay?
Yes, I understand.
Okay. I'm going to go on to the next page then. So now I'm going to show you a comparison of actually, it's the current fiscal year, fiscal year twenty twenty, twenty twenty one, which ends May thirty first of this year to the fiscal year twenty twenty one to twenty twenty two budget. All right? And I'll do it by the water fund, the sewer fund, and then the general fund. So the water fund, we're showing an increase both in revenues and expenses from two hundred ninety four thousand to three hundred twenty nine thousand or a twelve percent increase. And that actually is an increase just based on the actuals we expect to see because of a rate increase we instituted in twenty nineteen. In the current budget, we actually buffered the number because we weren't sure. We thought we would put in there a lowball number. And we found is that it was lowball, and we can justify putting this higher number in for next fiscal year. That allows us to pay back the fifty thousand dollars we owed to the general fund. It also covers our long term debt obligations from the water plant upgrades. And just so you know, we have three debts that we still owe for the water upgrade we just did. We've got a ten year, five hundred thousand dollar bond, which we owe three hundred thousand dollars left yet. Oh, and we have two bands, bond anticipation notes that will be converting to bonds in five to seven years. So what happens is, once we pay off the five hundred thousand dollar bond, and we'll take the five hundred fifty thousand dollar band and convert that to a ten year bond. And unfortunately, a few years later after that, we'll convert the two hundred thousand dollar band into a two hundred thousand dollar bond. All right? So just so you know, what we have right now is a debt obligation for the water improvement we made at the water tower in the water plant of three hundred thousand plus five hundred fifty thousand plus seven hundred thousand, basically a million fifty thousand dollars of debt we still owe because of the water plant upgrades. And on top of that, we established a water, a capital reserve fund for both the water and sewer. So we can build ourselves some seed money for the next time we need to do infrastructure improvements for both water and sewer. Any questions about that? Okay. Then the sewer fund, we were able to increase the expected revenue from two hundred eighty nine thousand to three hundred fifty one thousand of twenty one percent, which we needed to do because of some necessary near term fixes for the maintenance and repair of what we currently have, as well as to get ready for some major infrastructure improvements we need to do at the sewer plant. So what we did that was we increased the revenue sixteen percent. We passed that by resolution at the February, I think it was a February or maybe the March of board meeting. And we also are going to increase the sewer special benefit assessment, ten thousand dollars. We needed both those things in order for us to be able to afford the maintenance and repair cost of the current structure, as well as start building a some seed money for some infrastructure improvements for the future. We talked about the SBA. So why do we increase the SBA? So what is the SBA? The sewer sewer special benefit assessment is basically money that we charge along with your tax bill. So if you look at your village tax bill, you'll see a line at the bottom that says specifically a sewer SBA, something like that. Anyway. And so what it does is it basically says for all those who are customers of the sewer plant, you pay money upfront, independent of whether or not you use the sewer at all. But if you're a sewer customer, this is like upfront money. Okay? That everyone is going to pay for pay. All right? And what that does is it allows us to affect our budget, affect our balance. So we've got equal revenues and expenses going into this year. It's going to allow us to pay back the money that we owed to the general fund. It's going to cover maintenance, repair of the aging infrastructure. By the way, in order for the current year budget to fit, I worked with Scott to take out about fifty thousand dollars that he wanted to put in, invest in the sewer. We couldn't afford it last year. So we're putting that money back in there. And we're also establishing a capital reserve because the next infrastructure improvement we're going to be working on is the sewer fund. All right? Any question about what we're doing there? Okay. Those were the easy ones. The general fund. So the general fund, the revenues and expenses are going to grow from one point eight eight million in the current fiscal year to one point nine four million. Two point nine percent growth in both revenue and expenses. That's fifty five thousand dollars. It just, I'll break out for you. The one point nine four million, here's how it breaks out between the four key areas in the general fund. Fire and rescue is seven hundred thousand of that. The front office is five hundred thousand. Highway is five hundred thousand. The police is two hundred thousand. So some of the detail there, fire, rescue, seven hundred thousand. You should know that four hundred thousand of that is the cost we pay to NDP Northern Duchess paramedics to provide twenty four seven paid ambulance service with paramedic onboard to the village and the town. All right? And front office, highway and police, I think you've seen the details through the budgets we've gone through in the last couple of weeks. So one point nine four million is what our general fund balance is going to be. Expense equals revenue. Now, the tax cap levy, this is the portion of the revenue that comes from the taxes that we bill all of our residents. The tax cap levy was nine hundred seventy six thousand dollars this year. And it was allowed to grow one point six percent to nine hundred ninety one thousand five hundred. That was a fifteen thousand five hundred dollar increase was allowed for us to be under the tax cap. But our budget, because of all the problems I showed you on the previous chart, is going to be a million thirty four thousand. It's going to grow fifty eight thousand, which is going to be a six percent increase in the property taxes for all of us residents. And by the way, that's assuming that your property was not reassessed from last year to this year. And point of fact, both Buffy's property and my property have been reassessed in the in the positive fashion. So our increase is going to go up a little more than six percent. Just FYI, Buffy. Now, the third chart I'm going to show you is some of the detail behind that six percent increase. Any questions about these overall numbers first? No? Judith, you okay with everything? Where is Judith? I can't even see Judith. Judith, you're on mute.
Okay.
Yes.
All right. Now, I'm so far, I'm okay.
Okay, good. And Seal, I assume you're okay?
Well, just are there any monies coming in from New York State for the water fund or the sewer fund? That would help that or no? This is it?
Actually, the money that we are still owed from New York State, this is the one point one million dollars that they paid towards the one point nine million dollar overall improvement we made, we are still owed two hundred eighty five thousand dollars of that from New York State. And so for us to get that final payment, we have the health department is going to come next week and give us hopefully a final approval of the new water plant facility. Once they give us that approval, the facility, the company, the department in New York State called EFC, I believe, ought to be able to issue us the final check. And by the way, Mike, I don't know if you heard, but also Duchess County owed us nineteen thousand dollars yet.
Correct.
For their piece. And Sarah just showed me today that they delivered the check for the nineteen thousand. So we've got that.
Tim, that was that that was not that. That that was our the county making us whole for our taxes. But it's about the same amount.
It was, very ironically. Okay. Therefore, the county still owes us nineteen thousand dollars.
Correct.
So Seal, those those monies that were due from the state and from the county are going to be used to pay the final to come bills for the contractors that are still out doing finishing work.
Okay. Okay, thank you.
All right. Now, the third chart just gives you some detail behind the reason for the increase. And what I did was I went through the different areas and just did a comparison. I kind of kind of ranked it by those areas that grew the most and why. So for example, the police budget in the current year, twenty twenty to twenty twenty one, totaled a hundred and sixty one thousand dollars. For the next budget, it's a hundred, it's two hundred eight thousand dollars. And the reason for the forty seven thousand dollar increase was a multiple of reasons. First off, we found out that we hadn't budgeted enough for their base pay. We hadn't considered enough for their overtime. We didn't include anything for shift coverage or the new vehicle. And we had underestimated the amount we have to pay towards New York State for the police retirement. So those six reasons are why the police budget grew the most of all the budgets we looked at. New York State Retirement, non-police, we had to increase that twenty one percent because we had incorrect estimates for the current budget. Likewise, Social Security, we didn't know the right numbers there. The attorney, we only booked ten thousand and we went way over. And it wasn't because of anything that we did extraordinary. It was just because we just need the lawyers. And we just had to put the right number in for this budget. So all three of those categories, basically, we had unrealistic estimates in twenty nineteen, and we were fixing to be realistic this year. Basically, we're removing the excuses we have for why we can't make this year's budget. Streets and maintenance, main reason for that going up to five percent is because we put in estimated overtime for snow. We assume the same amount of overtime is going to be experienced this coming year as experienced last year. All right? The bill bill for the ambulance rescue service went up ten thousand by contract. Every year, the NDP contract goes up two and a half percent. There's also a slight increase in what the rescue, the volunteer rescue squad needed in terms of supplies and equipment. So that's how that grew, three percent. The clerk and deputy clerk, there are times when, like right now, Sarah's on overtime because we need her to be present for these meetings that are after hours. And there's also times where Karen has to work with both Sarah and Nicole on things like the annual report we give to the New York State Controller's Office. So those added overtimes have got to be included in our budget in order for us to be whole. And then there's the new dump truck adds about ten thousand dollars to the garage budget. Now, we did make some reductions from current budget to next year's. For example, the village hall budget went down fourteen thousand because this year we're going to be replacing the oil burner. And that won't be happening for another twenty years, hopefully, if not longer. The fire budget, they didn't go through and script their month, their numbers because of the increases they had for that new roof they wanted. Didn't make accommodations in the medical budget because we'd overfunded the HRA. We removed contingency, as I said before. We took out the reserves except for the apparatus for the fire department, which saved us thirty three thousand dollars. So the net, if you look at a hundred thirty one thousand dollars, additional expenses with those top categories and subtract the seventy three thousand that we we save with some of the things we did, there you can see about the sixty thousand dollars. And the other elements of the budget are a bunch of pluses and minuses, but these were the major ones I just wanted to highlight to you. Any questions about that? Judith?
No, I'm okay.
Okay, Seal?
No, no questions.
Okay, good. All right, then I'm going to go. Well, here's the spreadsheet, which I assume you've all got, which just shows the details for all the numbers that I summarized in the previous three charts. And I don't know if there's anything I want to discuss here unless anyone's got a question about it. Oh, here's an interesting comment. This thing here, C twenty nineteen, twenty twenty actuals. Remember, we were a hundred thousand dollars in the red? Here it shows we're four hundred sixty, thirty six thousand dollars in the red. Well, that's an inflated number because this includes the pass through transfer we did. We moved money from the reserve for the firehouse apparatus through the general fund to pay for the new fire fire truck. All right, so this is overinflated. You can see in the details where it actually transaction occurred. But that's where, you know, Karen told us the actual in the red was a hundred thousand dollars, and this extraneous is because of a pass through payment we made to pay our portion of the new fire truck. All right? Okay, if there's no questions about the detail in the spreadsheet, I'm going to move on. And where am I going, Sarah, to find the actual resolution? I'm going to go to your email, I guess.
Yeah, she might not have posted it.
Okay, so the first thing we're going to talk about is the tax cap override. So what I need to do is I need a motion to open the public hearing.
I'll make that motion.
In a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, so first off, let me read the resolution. And then I'll ask for any public comment. So Resolution seven dash twenty twenty one, Local Law Number One of the Year Twenty Twenty One, Village of Milbrook, County of Duchess. A local law authorizes a property tax levy in excess of the limit established in General Municipal Law three dash C. Section one legislative intent. It is intended this local law to allow the Village of Milbrook to adopt a budget for the fiscal year twenty one, twenty two. It requires a real property tax levy in excess of the tax levy limit as defined by General Municipal Law three dash C. Section two authority. This local law is adopted pursuant to subdivision five of the General Municipal Law three dash C, which expressly authorizes a local government's governing body to override the property tax cap for the coming fiscal year by the adoption of a local law approved by a vote of sixty percent of said governing body. Section three, tax levy limit override. Board of Trustees, the Village of Milbrook, County of Duchess, is hereby authorized to adopt a budget for the fiscal year twenty twenty one, twenty twenty two that requires a real property tax levy in excess of the amount otherwise prescribed in General Municipal Law three dash C. Section four, severability. If a court determines that any clause, sentence, paragraph, subdivision, or part of this local law for the application thereof to any person, firm, or corporation, or circumstances invalid or unconstitutional, the court's order or judgment shall not affect, impair, or validate the remainder of this local law. It shall be confined in its operation to the clause, sentence, paragraph, subdivision, or part of this local law or in its application to the person, individual, firm, or corporation, or circumstance directly involved in the controversy in which such judgment or order shall be rendered. Section five, effective date. This local law shall take effect immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State. The resolution for the local law was duly put to a vote call, vote which resulted in the following. Oh, wait a minute. First, I have to open up for public comment, right?
Yes.
Correct.
All right, so is there any public comment or questions about the local law?
No, I understand the local law.
And Judith?
I'm okay.
Okay, so let me read the section again. This local law shall take effect immediately upon filing with the Secretary of State. The resolution of local law was duly put to a roll call vote, which resulted in the fine. So Sarah, you want to make the roll call?
Well, do you want to close the public hearing first?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
In a second?
Second.
All those in favor? Okay, good. Roll call?
Now, I think you wanted to do the public hearing for the budget before you passed both of them, right?
Oh, is that right? Okay. I'm totally sure Beck and Collier.
I'm just following the agenda.
At least one of us is. Now, where's that at?
The agenda?
No, no, the. Let me go look at the agenda for a change. Let's see. Wait, the second one is for the budget.
Yep.
So can I get a motion to open the public hearing for the budget?
I'll motion.
In a second?
I'll second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay, the public hearing is open for the adoption of the budget. Any public comment about that?
No.
Judith?
Hello?
Okay. Can I get a motion to close the public hearing?
I'll make that motion.
In a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Vicky, you're on mute.
I am?
She's good.
There you go.
Okay, now we can do section five.
I have to read it again?
No, no, nope. Mayor Colapi?
Aye.
Trustee Herzog?
Aye.
Trustee Cantino?
Aye.
Trustee Arbogast?
Aye.
Thank you. And now can I get a, let's see. Now, I want a motion to pass the budget, right?
Well, you wanted to increase the SBA. So I think you needed to do a vote for that.
Okay, I get a motion to increase the SBA from forty thousand a year to fifty thousand a year.
I'll make that motion.
In a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Mayor Colapi?
Aye.
Trustee Herzog?
Aye.
Trustee Cantino?
Aye.
Trustee Arbogast?
Aye.
All right, good.
And now you want to adopt the budget.
All right, do I need a motion? I gotta make a motion first?
Correct.
All right, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt the budget as so described in this meeting. Can I get a second?
Second that.
Okay.
Mayor Colapi?
Aye.
Trustee Herzog?
Aye.
Trustee Cantino?
Aye.
Trustee Arbogast?
Aye.
It's passed.
All right, very good. Now, now Sarah's real work starts.
Yes. True.
Okay, so we've done the tax cap override, we've done the budget, we've done the SBA. That completes the budget portion of the meeting, is that correct?
That's correct.
Well done, everybody.
Good job, everybody, seriously.
Yes. Let's, let's talk about this new thing that just came across my desk. This is the request from the local VFW for a public assembly permit for May thirty first. Memorial Day Parade. Sort of like the good old days. See, what they want to have a parade that starts over the hill on Franklin Avenue, down by Cardinal Hayes. You know what I'm talking about, over the hill. March up over the hill, down Franklin Avenue, take a left at Front Street, past the firehouse. Come on Franklin, go to the memorial. There's a leaf rain, leaf wreath lane. And then march up Tribute Gardens. Top of the hill, and they have a speaker plan. Somewhere there's a twenty one gun salute or some kind of stuff going on there. So anyway, I talked to a gentleman from the VFW, Jeff Mossman, who was put together the permit. He needs to get the guards, okay, that shouldn't be a problem. He needs to get the Millbrook Rescue Squad lined up. He wants police for traffic control on both ends of the Franklin Avenue, as usual, and a police car to lead the parade. He says that he doesn't anticipate it being more than two hundred people. Which, by the way, the latest directive we've got from New York State is as of March twenty second of this year, social gatherings are now limited to two hundred people if the activity is outdoors, two hundred people. Even then, individuals must wear masks if they are potentially within six feet of others or in a transportation vehicle with other people. The concern I have is that Jeff wants to do a lot to basically increase participation. He's got the Univale is going to have a fire truck there. He wants to have a parade of individual people that can have their cars with non-political flags, patriotic flags showing. And he wants to have some people throwing candy out to the people on the side. This has got to be a concern, and he admitted that even he couldn't just guarantee that this will keep the total attendance under two hundred. He says on the application number of people expects is seventy five. That's the people associated with the parade. Doesn't count. You know, residents who want to come out and watch a parade. And I'm just afraid, given all the pent-up desire people who have to get out and do things normal again, that we're going to have a lot of participation. So I, I made a couple of calls. Talked to the Duchess County Veterans Affairs Head. And he had talked to the Duchess County Health Director, who was encouraging this kind of activity, as long as there's clear guidance about social distancing, the use of ma- masks. He didn't seem to be too concerned about the two hundred person limit. And so I did call the New York State Health Director's Office. What's the name, Hobroch? You know, who's, who's the Health Commissioner for New York State?
I have no idea, sorry.
He's on TV all the time. His name escapes me, to tell you the truth. So anyway, I, I called his office and I sent a message to one of his staff describing what we're doing and asking their guidance. Because, again, I can't guarantee that participation is going to stay under two hundred people. And my request is, do you allow us to go as is? Do you recommend that we do things to reduce participation and reduce publicity? Like just make it only village residents, no trucks from, from Univale? Eliminate the resident cars, just to make it a simple parade of vets and a simple lane of the reef, and then a ceremony up at the top of the Tribute Gardens? Or do you just recommend we cancel the whole thing? So I'm waiting for their feedback. I'd like to know what the board thinks about this.
Well, my concern is, is how do you keep people from social, like, social distancing? You know, if that's one of the rules of the gathering, you know?
Yep.
So who's going to be monitoring that? And, you know? I don't know.
Yeah, it's actually, what Jeff said is, Jeff said, well, the police could be there, and I just don't really want the police going around asking people to distance, because then this question of, well, this is my family, or, you know, these are my friends all the time, you know?
Yeah, or, you know, we've all been vaccinated, we're in our little pod, and then the whole, the whole mask mandate as well, if you're supposed to be in a gathering of this, there are, you know, some people who, you know, if you're outside and so forth, don't want to wear a mask as well. So policing both of those things right there is a concern.
Yeah.
My, yeah, my concern, my concern is similar to Buffy's, but I, I feel strongly that I don't want this to turn into what we do for the Festival of Lights or any other parade of that nature by throwing out candy and turning it into something different than it's always been. It's always been a parade to celebrate, to, to, I don't celebrate is the right word, but to remember the veterans who, who served. And it's, it's far, it's supposed to be far more solemn than that. I mean, they even tie up the playground equipment up at the top of the hill by Tribute Garden, so during parts of the ceremony when they're playing taps and when they're doing the twenty one gun salute, they don't want kids playing on the playground. So that kind of applies in the face of having extra car escorts, which would totally mess up the idea of having to stop the parade, which we do at least twice, if not three times, if memory serves me, to get from, you know, to get down the street and then where they lay the wreath, and then while they're laying the wreath, it's, you know, it's, it's going to present logistically a nightmare. If we want to do a traditional ceremony, then you know, I think it's going to have to be with the understanding that we could end up violating the two hundred people limit, and that's a different question altogether. Because you will get people who will say it's, I'm not wearing a mask, and then what do you do? I mean, it's, if, if you're in a situation where, you know, the individual shop owners don't want people in their stores without a mask, they can make that policy and they can refuse to serve someone if that's the way they feel. Or try to make sure that the social distancing is enforced. In a public event like that, all that goes out the window.
Yeah.
You, you can't have the, the police running around trying to spread people out and force them to stand apart or whatever. It just doesn't work, so.
Okay, good points, Mike. Vicky, you're going to ask?
You know, I am inclined to want to try to figure out if there's a way to accommodate them. Agreeing with Mike that it should be, you know, remain a solemn event. I, I mean, I understand why they want to throw candy to increase participation. I don't think it has to be solemn, I think, and it, it doesn't have to be the way it always is, except that COVID, I think, making it more festive or with kids running around and chasing candy already changes our ability to hope for social distancing. So, I mean, to me, maybe one of the things we can do is spread out the parade route so that, you know, automatically people are further apart, who are onlookers, and participants could be further apart. And maybe ask the organizers to make sure that they spread out the people that are marching so that we have a better chance of distance. I mean, it seems to me we're going to have to start doing certain things again. And if people abuse the privilege starting with this event, then we have a basis for limiting them next time.
Well, you're going to get.
July fourth is around the corner. There's all kinds of things that are coming up.
Yeah, I know. Vicky makes a good point. We are going to have, as people, as this, everything opens up, people are vaccinated, they're going to, they're going to want to be able to get together and do these kinds of larger gatherings and, and the, and the requirements and the guidance out of Albany as well as out of Washington is going to change. By July fourth, you very well could have gatherings that could be well above two hundred and plus of the amount of vaccination. Or you could go in the opposite direction and have far more cases due to variants, and nobody can predict that accurately. It's just impossible to know where we're going to be, so.
The other point, though, Mike, you make is good, which is that between now and May thirty first, the criteria may change, probably will change. But May, May thirty first isn't July fourth, which is where we're all kind of focused on having a, a same old, same old kind of a July fourth, but it's a long way from where we are right now, so. I guess one thing I'd ask Judith, if she could keep us posted, if she hears of any other municipality that's going to have a Memorial Day Parade.
Sure.
Appreciate that if you would. Thanks. Yeah, you know, one of the things I, I credit Jeff for coming to us early. So we can have this discussion as opposed to being in a panic at the eleventh hour. On the other hand, we're probably early compared to everybody else that maybe eventually ended up with a Memorial Day Parade. So pros and cons there. All right, so look, I think you made some good points. I'm going to wait for your back from, it's Howard Zucker. Is the name we should all know.
The Health Commissioner, Zucker, yes. You're absolutely right.
I'll wait to hear back from his office in terms of what guidance they give before I actually respond, but I think what Mike said about keeping it a solemn event, I like that, that kind of a theme. Which my main mind says, no candy, no resident vehicles with patriotic flags, only Millbrook fire equipment, kind of keeping it local. Maybe that's the place to start the discussion. But let's, Judith's cat, did anybody see Judith's cat?
Missed it, sorry.
Behind you, Judith.
Okay. So where was I before? I was distracted by the cat. Oh, yeah. So I'm going to wait your back from Howard Zucker's office. But that's kind of the theme I think I'm going to give back to Jeff as far as they, where we are right now. Now, I may give you some feedback now. We have until the next meeting of the board, which is going to be April twenty first, not on the fourteenth. Right, this, this time we're going to do it the third Wednesday of the month, everyone knows, six PM. Since I'm going to be out of town next, next week. So we'll do it on the twenty first, and I'll put this on the agenda for that meeting as well. I'll give you an update of whatever information I've heard from Zucker's office, from the VFW, and we can discuss it again. All right?
Yeah, I would also, I would also say that there's a good chance that be in that interim, we can contact, I can contact the county and find out if they're going to try to be doing a countywide event, because last year they had a, they had a car, a, a car caravan that went through different parts of the county, and they were trying to do a unified county observance in, as a replacement for local parades. And so that, that, if that's still happening, I'm not saying it's, it's better than doing a local parade, but, you know, I, I, I think they're going to have to try to get some feedback from not just Millbrook, but from a lot of other places that had their own ceremonies usually and see where they stand, so.
By the way, Mike, you're going to cover for me at the Monday call with Molinaro, right?
Correct.
So would you make a note to just ask that question at that meeting?
Absolutely.
I, I appreciate that. I did send an email to Rachel Cashmere?
Cashmere, yes.
Cashmere, today. Asking if they had any guidance regarding this, and I haven't heard back yet, so I will. I'll, I'll let you know if I hear anything on that.
Okay.
But I think if you ask that in person at the Monday meeting, that'd be a big help. So you got a question?
Yeah, I was just thinking about last summer, which was much, very serious. We had that possibly pretty successful Black Lives Matter pro, I don't know, protest, but but the gathering and everyone sped out, spread out pretty nicely on the street. How did, how did we get them, how do we get people's cooperation then? I know Jared was there.
We basically had very little to say with that because it was our First Amendment right to be able to peacefully protest.
Oh, all right.
So it's basically the, the people, the participants' option to conform to what the, you know, the state mandate was. I don't think Jared had to do any or did do any, you know, instructing of people to wear a mask or whatever. People seemed to be pretty conforming anyway.
Also, organizers sort of ask people, now that I think about it, to.
All right.
It wasn't perfect, though. I'm sorry.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I think Jared gave it some ground rules and said, if you're going to have protest, this is what you can do and can't do. And he made it quite clear that they could stand less than six feet, they could stand closer together, but they had to be, they couldn't obstruct any vehicular transportation. And they were forming almost a single fire line on both sides of the road around, you know, down by the Village Green. And that's pretty much where. You know, down by the Village Green, uh, and that's pretty much where most of it was. Very little of it was. On the business area of the, of the village, uh, and that, and it went, and it went well. I give Jared credit for his direction on that as well as the organizers, but they were definitely not six feet apart.
Yeah, but they wore masks and they did, uh, they were sensitive anyway.
Yeah, I know, there was, there was, there was cooperation there.
Yeah. Okay, if there's no more questions or discussion about that?
Is there public input?
Yeah, sure.
So if, um, maybe the organizers could decrease the length of the parade, like, and keep it down, like, start. I don't know, at, by the library or, or, or further down and. Keep it down more by the green. I don't, I don't know, and ask people to spread out in the same fashion. I sort of agree with Vicky that. Um, I think people want something, but, but I also understand it's gotta be spread out and people have to cooperate. I also wonder, could we keep everybody but participants out of the, um, Thorin, uh, out of the park?
Tribute Gardens?
Yeah, Tribute Gardens, to help that be spread out. I don't know, maybe that many people don't go up there anyway.
Actually, that, that's, that's my rec- recollection of two years ago. Two years ago, I recall going down to see what was going on at the, uh, Cardinal Hayes, you know, where they start. I don't know, were the Boy Scouts even there, Mike?
Yeah, the Boy Scouts were there, and generally what you have is you have the Boy Scouts, the Girl Scouts, the Fire Department. The V F W represented, and, uh, that's pretty much it. I mean, I, I hope I'm not leaving out. Yeah, I hope I'm not leaving out an essential group, but I mean, basically that's it. So it's, when he says seventy five participants, he's not far off. I mean, the whole parade of participants wouldn't usually be more than seventy five people. And if you add the, you know, the, the people on the street, uh, you know, it, it, it varies, but. It, it could be two hundred, it could be slightly more based on people's, uh, desire to attend, and you can't predict that. That's the only, that's the only one thing.
I just think two hundred is a lowball number. If we, if we, you know, if it's lousy weather, that will affect it a lot.
Oh, absolutely, yeah.
Although Jeff said that he's talked to the Fire Department about moving, oh no, he's talked to the school. About moving the, uh, the speakers, the speaker into the gym.
We've, we've done that in the past. I know I, I, you know, they use the auditorium, what is now the auditorium in the new high school. Uh, and they spread everybody out so that they could, and. The, all the participants in the parade easily fit in that, in that, uh, situation with social distancing and masks. So if it is a rainy day, that's usually the goat, the alternate plan.
Yeah, okay. Alright, look, I'll close it there, and just to let you know, uh, we'll be talking about it again on the twenty first. So can I, can I get a motion to adjourn the meeting?
I'll make that motion.
In a second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, thank you very much. Good meeting.
Thank you.
Thank you. Bye bye.
Take care.